Counsel, roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
We have Mr. Foyce here tonight, but he has not yet been sworn in, so he will not be voting, but he's present to listen. Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen? Here. Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Kiri. We have a work session on the discussion of the Middle Cedar watershed. And I believe, Mr. Castle, you're going to be addressing this for us.
I am, thank you, Ms. Jewen. Good evening, council members, staff, and audience members here and at home. I'm Wayne Castle, Associate Engineer for the City of Waterloo. I am Waterloo's representative on the Middle Cedar Watershed Management Board. Quick background on this whole watershed management authority before we get into our presenters. It was founded in 2016, although the roots go back to 2008. There had been discussion after the 2008 flooding. This is based, this watershed management authority was really started from a U.S. HUD grant back in 2016. A number of watersheds in Iowa received money to do planning to help prevent flooding as it impacted rural areas. Our watershed has 10 counties, 1.5 million acres of land, 73 percent of that ag land. Right now Benton County is our lead agency. They do handle the finances, the staff and the offices. The WMA has one staff member, his name is Adam Rodenberg, and he is down in Benton County. In October 2017, the WMA Board hired Emmons and Oliver Resources to put together a plan for the watershed management authority so that we have a 20-year roadmap to prioritize conservation efforts, which then led us to get to funding and then implementation of projects. The watershed management authority has a website, it is middlecederwma.com. And I will turn it over to Larry Weber of the University of Iowa Hydroscience and Engineering, and he will be followed by Pat Conrad of EOR. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne, and thanks, counsel and staff. It's my pleasure to be here this evening just to give you a little bit of an oversight in terms of the work that's happening in water resources across the state of Iowa. As Wayne mentioned, I'm with the University of Iowa and was director of the water program down there called IIHR Hydroscience and Engineering. We began a program called the Iowa Flood Center in response to the 2008 floods that impacted so much of eastern Iowa. That work has been to put sensors out, improve stream forecasting in Iowa, flood plane mapping. You can go to the Iowa Flood Information System and find all of the information that we have that's flood-related. In 2010, the state of Iowa received $92 million of supplemental disaster recovery monies to help the state recover from the 2008 event. $8.8 million of those funds went into a pilot project that focused on the upper cedar watershed. There we built about $1.5 million of wetlands in a small watershed called Beaver Creek. It's reduced a stream flow out of that watershed and improved water quality. That was a five-year project. We spent about $5 million on conservation practices in the upper cedar, in the Turkey River, and in southern Iowa in Sopanshak West Creeks. About the time that five-year program was finishing, Housing and Urban Development came out with a new program called the National Disaster Resilience Competition where they drew in $500 million of disaster recovery monies. The Rockefeller Foundation put in $500 million of funding to create this National Disaster Resilience Competition. So $1 billion was available. The state of Iowa qualified because we had presidential disaster declarations related to flooding in the qualification years of 2011, '12, and '13. The state submitted a pre-proposal along with 62 other jurisdictions in Iowa. The state was invited, as one of 40 participants, to submit a full proposal. I was contacted by the governor's office to ask if we would write the proposal. And so my team wrote the proposal. We focused on flood recovery through distributed conservation practices to hold water back where it falls. We were fortunate to be awarded, as a state, $96,899,177 in January of 2016. About $40 million will go towards urban infrastructure for stormwater management in Dubuque, Coralville, and Storm Lake. And about $40 million will go to rural conservation practices in eight watersheds in Iowa. The Upper Iowa, the Upper Wapsa-Pinnican, the Middle Cedar, Clear Creek, the English River, North Raccoon Flowing to Des Moines, and in far southwest Iowa with the East and West Nishna-Batna. The Middle Cedar happens to be the largest watershed in terms of conservation practices. We'll spend about $8.4 million of funding on these conservation practices, again, looking to hold water back in rural watersheds and private lands for public benefit. It's been a tremendous partnership amongst many agencies. So state agencies involved, all three regents institutions, including the University of Northern Iowa Tallgrass Prairie Center, Iowa State University and the University of Iowa, commodity groups from the Corn Growers Association to Soybean Association, the Farm Bureau Federation, as well as conservation groups, Ducks Unlimited, the Nature Conservancy, and others. So what's been most interesting for me and the part that I'm most proud of is that when HUD made their announcement letter to Iowa, this $96.9 million, we were the fourth-largest awardee of the 11 winners in this grant. New York, New Jersey, both impacted by Superstorm Sandy, hundreds of millions of dollars of loss, billions of dollars of loss. Third was the city of New Orleans, and of course, every Gulf landing hurricane that comes into southern U.S., and then the state of Iowa is fourth. And the region that we were fourth was in part because of these tremendous partnerships that we have. HUD is looking at this program in Iowa as being replicable across the Midwest and, in fact, across the country, working with private landowners for public benefit. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have after Pat's presentation. Currently, we have about 24 watershed management authorities in Iowa, the Middle Cedar being one of those, so.
Great.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Pat Conrad. I'm with Emmons and Oliver Resources. We are a watershed planning firm out of the, thank you, out of the Twin Cities. As Larry mentioned, we are part of an overall, kind of a larger project that includes hydrologic assessment work, hazard mitigation planning, resiliency action planning, all these other elements that are being provided for each of the watersheds in the eight grant application watersheds. So our piece of this is developing a watershed management plan. So as Wayne mentioned, the Middle Cedar Watershed Management Authority is made up of 10 counties, and you can see kind of the membership here with the different cities and counties that are members of the Watershed Management Authority. I think it's important to note here is that, you know, watershed management authorities are built on, they're not built on political boundaries, they're built on hydrologic boundaries. So all the areas that drain to a specific resource are members of that watershed management authority. The Middle Cedar is somewhat unique in that that water body of interest, if you will, is a reach of the Cedar River. So we don't have the headwaters of the Cedar River within our management authority, but you can see the organization in the physical layout of the watershed. You know, as these guys also mentioned, this is the biggest, and I think it's probably the most premier of the watershed management authorities in the watershed approach grant. It has most eyes watching it. It has the best chance of success. I think it has the best shot of being successful due to the partnerships, the strong partnerships that have formed in this watershed and the interest that's been generated in this area. So watershed management planning. So you've all been parts of, you've been part of other planning initiatives, and watershed planning is really no different. There's the three basic phases of issues identification, finding out what's going on in the watershed, what are the concerns, what are the problems, what are really the issues facing the resources of the watershed? Establishment of goals, kind of defining that future of the watershed, how do we want to see the watershed look in the future? What do we want to see in our water resources? And then finally, developing an action plan, if you will. So what do we need to do to get to that future vision? So that watershed management planning process kind of all is built on a foundation of strong technical, scientific work. So we start off with a very detailed watershed assessment. You guys are very familiar with the flooding that occurs on the Cedar River, but we also have flooding that occurs in some of our larger tributaries, from Beaver Creek to Blackhawk Creek to Prairie Creek. Some of these smaller creeks also experience flooding. So we've pulled together all that information of where do we have losses associated with flooding. We look at things like losses per acre, we've looked at things like losses per capita. All this is kind of building that foundation so that we can go out and talk to the public, talk to the stakeholders, and talk to the WMA members about what's going on in the watershed. Water quality is a concern. We know that there are issues in the Gulf of Mexico that we, the entire Midwest drains down to. You know, we've got hypoxia down there, we've got all kinds of dead zone issues. But when you bring it back home, we also know that we have water quality issues in the Cedar River itself. We've got a drinking water impairment down in the city of Cedar Rapids where they've experienced nitrate concentrations in their drinking water supply that are very elevated and are of concern. We can take that down further to some of these smaller subwatersheds, some of these smaller streams that have recreational impairments because of bacteria concentrations in that water. So we know that we've got problems, you know, all throughout the watershed. And that's important because these are, you know, so these are subwatersheds highlighted here where we've got streams that are potentially unsafe for recreational contact. Important because those also coincide with some of the more heavily used recreational assets that we have in the watershed. So these are areas where folks are more likely to canoe, paddle, kayak, splash around in, kids are playing in. So it's kind of important to understand where do we have health concerns from contact with that water and where are people using that water? So in addition to the surface water issues, we've got the drinking water issues. We've got high nitrate concentrations that show up in some of our wells. We've got a situation in the Middle Cedar, as we do in a lot of Iowa, where the drinking water supply, the water we're pulling for drinking water is very closely associated with surface water, okay? So it's not deep aquifers that are separated from our surface water, they're very much intertwined. And so we can have increased nutrient concentrations in our drinking water wells. So in addition to looking at where are the problems and what are the concerns, we also kind of do this pollutant source assessment. So where are these hot spots? Where are these nutrients being generated? So we look at nitrate, we look at phosphorus, but then we also look at bacteria. Where do we have likely sources of that bacteria that is getting into our storms or into our streams? So we develop all this information for, again, for that foundation of the watershed management And then we summarize it all at this HUC-12 scale. So the overall larger watershed, we divide up into smaller HUC-12 subwatersheds, and there are about 68 in the Middle Cedar. And I'm going to run through very quickly a couple of the subwatersheds that are near the Cedar Falls Waterloo metro, Hammer's Creek, Beaver Creek, and the Elk Run subwatershed. So tonight, I'm going to go through some of the basic information that we've assembled and some of the analysis that we've done at this scale. So we've summarized the information that I just mentioned at this scale. So we look at where are there drinking water issues, where are there bacteria issues, where is there fishing, where do people wade, where do people recreate in these streams? Kind of look at what, how dirty is this sub watershed compared to the other subwatersheds? So you can see some of the land use information we've compiled here, loads and loading rates of pollutants, impairments within this watershed, and then also the flood losses that occur in this sub watershed. So we have that information for Hammer's Creek, and you can see a similar analysis that we've done for the summary for Elk Creek. Okay, so back to the watershed planning process. I kind of want to hit the main steps that we went through to identify issues, run through this process, and develop this watershed management plan. So the first step that I mentioned is this identification of issues. So this was conducted through a series of open houses, meetings with farmers, small work group meetings with farmers, and other meetings throughout the watershed. Couple of the meetings were held at the University of Northern Iowa, and we've had farmer workshops throughout the watershed where we sit down with farmers and talk to them about what's going on in their specific small sub watershed areas. Finally, as we gather the issues, then we developed a goal-setting session. We had a goal-setting session that consisted of membership of the WMA, so sat down with them, and for each of these major watershed issues, we had them develop goals for the future. From those goals, we developed objectives. Went through a prioritization of those goals and objectives, again, through bringing it back out to the public, had another series of stakeholder meetings where we had open houses, went out and talked to folks, and got their input on these goals and objectives. Finally, all of this information was pulled together, and we went through a targeting exercise and said, okay, we know what all your priorities are, from drinking water to socially vulnerable populations, to flood risk, to where are their past conservation efforts in the watershed? We stacked all of these issues together and all these goals together and all these priorities together and determined where the targets of watershed, implementation of watersheds should be. So these are a subset of all the HUC-12 subwatersheds. These are the areas that we've identified are the most critical, most important to work in first. And so you can see quite a few of them are actually centered around the Cedar Falls Waterloo We went through an exercise with the WMA and said, okay, well, if this is what you want to do, how are you going to go about doing it? So we conducted an exercise we called "If I Had $1 Million." Okay, so we went through and asked them to vote with money, like, where would you spend your money? How would you get this effort done? And overwhelmingly, it went into cost share. So really, the idea was to provide incentives, provide ways to get farmers to get these practices, conservation practices, on their lands. Another large implementation mechanism that was identified was education outreach. So getting that message out there of these are the conservation practices that work, this is the benefit that can come from them, that's a really key implementation mechanism. So on to the, kind of what we're looking at for this implementation plan. So how do we go about cleaning up our water and reducing flooding? So we're working off of what's referred to as the conservation pyramid. Generally, what this refers to is starting at the base of that pyramid being those practices that benefit soil health. So you can see the kind of practices would be cover crops, use of nutrient management techniques, things that really kind of rejuvenate the soil and make the soil more healthy. Moving up the pyramid, we talk about infield practices, edge-of-field practices, and then finally riparian management, so the buffers and those types of things that you hear a lot about. In addition to the conservation practices in the agricultural setting, we have a similar exercise to talk about conservation practices that can be done in the urban areas. So again, bringing it down to this small HUC-12 scale, we look at an example for the Hammer's Creek and the Elk Run areas, and you can see when we look at what's available for conservation practices in those subwatersheds, what kind of existing adoption rates do we have for each of those practices, and what are reasonable targets for conservation practices that we can hope to get out of these subwatersheds? You can kind of come up with this optimized look at what it would take for this specific sub watershed to meet a nutrient reduction strategy goal. So what would it take to meet the Iowa nutrient reduction strategy goal? And so you can see over the course of a 20-year annualized costs on the order of $1 million for this specific HUC-12. You can see that's broken down by the agricultural BMPs and the urban PMPs. It's also made up of actual expenses and then savings in terms of, some of these practices are zero cost or they're cost positive. So if we use less fertilizer on our lands, that's a savings. So you can see how the numbers go. We've got that information for all 68 subwatersheds in the Middle Cedar. So that was the example for Hammer's, and this is the example for Elk Run. So this is, this would be the cost for meeting the Iowa nutrient reduction strategy, but then there's also that benefit of flood reduction. So we've gone through and we've analyzed what would be the benefit in terms of flood damage reduction savings? So what would be the losses we don't have, you know, that kind of, so it's flood reduction benefit. So we've analyzed these at very specific locations throughout the sub watershed, and in the case of these examples, we'll look at the specific recording, reporting site for these two subwatersheds that I looked at. So in the case of Hammer's Creek, Beaver Creek, the estimated flood benefits, and we look at a specific, to do the analysis, we looked at a specific event, but I think what's important is the next two numbers. So in the case of this particular storm event that occurred on June 24th of 2013, we would have seen a four tenths of a foot reduction in flood stage as a result of these conservation practices, which would have saved 2.8 million in flood damages from that event. If you look at an annual reduced, an annual reduction in flood losses, you can look at about $960,000 in savings as a result of these conservation practices.
Mr. Conrad, I apologize, we're up against our time limit. Do you, how much more time would you like?
You know what? That is actually the last slide. The next steps are, we're finalizing this watershed management plan. It will come back to you this coming spring for adoption. And then as the watershed approach money that Larry mentioned, as that begins to sunset, then the WMA will need to kind of go into this implementation mode.
Okay. Wonderful.
That's what we had for tonight.
Yes, questions?
Yes, I just was wondering if we had questions. Who do we call?
You can call me.
Okay. Is it on here?
Yes.
Okay.
Or you can call Adam Rodenberg, or you can talk to Wayne, or any of us. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from council members? A lot of good information, most of which I don't totally understand. So you're going to walk us through a lot of that, right?
That's right.
But very important to certainly this area, so thank you for your work, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We'll be in touch, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Sir, second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Right into the Waterloo City Council Finance Committee. So Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here. Sir, a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of December 10th, 2018, as proposed.
I'll second that. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Morrissey, would you be willing to take the travel requests, please?
Yes, Madam Chairperson. First of all, there's a request, Rudy Jones from Community Development, the director there, for the 2019 Winter Legislative Policy and Professional Development Meeting at the National Community Development Association Conference in Washington, D.C., January 21st through 26th of next year, not to exceed $2,397. Next is City Attorney Dave Zellifer to attend the National Business Institute Legal Ethics Conflicts of Interest in Case Studies in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, December 18th of this year, amount not to exceed $229. Next is Mayor Quentin Hart to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors Winter Conference in Washington, D.C. from January 22nd through 25th with the amount not to exceed $1,900. And next, number four, is Officer Sommer and Jacubek to attend the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy ILEA course in Johnson, Iowa, January 3rd through April 19th of 2019, with the amount not to exceed $16,250.
I'll second that motion. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, sir.
Like to make the following motion for preauthorization, expending over $1,000. First is building maintenance with mountain estimate shipping handling of $4,498.50 for the emergency boiler repair and circuit boards for boiler one and two at Waterloo Center for the Arts. Next is mountain estimated shipping handling of $25,284.90 for replacement of door hardware for the exterior and second floor doors at the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. Next is a clerk's office with the mountain estimate shipping handling, $1,602 plus $65 shipping and handling for the Waterloo-Cedar Falls city directories. Next is code enforcement with the mountain estimate shipping handling of $2,250 for removal of three hazardous trees per court order. Next is garage with mountain estimate shipping handling of $3,196 and a nickel for the number seven catalyst module for street department truck number 191104. Next is leisure services, mountain estimate shipping handling of $31,183.44 for one John Deere 5090M utility tractor. Next is leisure services, mountain estimate shipping handling of $5,000 for the conceptual design services for the skate park. And next is leisure services, mountain estimate shipping handling of $2,500 for renewal of annual subscription to tree keeper software and mobile licenses. Next is leisure services with the mountain estimate shipping handling of $3,450 for geotechnical survey services. Next is the mayor with the mountain estimate, with the mountain estimate shipping handling of $60,000 for fiscal year 2019 metro coalition expenses, which are funded with dues from participating organizations. Next is the MIS Department with mountain estimate shipping handling not to exceed $9,000 for professional services related to upgrade cities VMware software from version 5.5 to 6.5. Next is the police department with the mountain estimate shipping handling $8,650 for a purchase of a one-year subscription for Leeds Online Power Plus investigative system. Next is sanitation department with the mountain estimate shipping handling of $1,430.73 plus $50 shipping handling for the annual uniform purchase for union employees. Next is the street department with the mountain estimate shipping handling $3,584.58 for three MS695732 air seats for street department graders. And finally, is the traffic department with the mountain estimate shipping handling $24,949.58 for the HPL365 64-inch latex printer ink and the 3XO edge holders and the Flexi MUTCD software and GFP363 TH63-inch top heater laminator.
I will second that motion with thanks for yeoman service, Mr. Morrissey. Discussion?
I hate to belate, but I had some questions, and I didn't get a chance to talk to anybody before the meeting, and excuse me for that, but on number six, just a real quick explanation of what that is.
Okay, who wants to address that? Noel? That's on building maintenance, replacement of the door hardware on Sullivan Brothers. Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We are upgrading the doors to have the panic bar hardware on them throughout the convention center.
Okay, okay.
And this is, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the items that had to be done in order for us to get our liquor license back for the Sullivan Brothers Center.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Other questions?
Yes, number eight, code enforcement, the removal of the hazardous trees, and I just, my only question was, how are those costs charged back to the property owner? How's that done?
Is that something, Mr. Hudding, can you address that? No. You can, Michelle, thank you.
Yeah, so code enforcement will go have someone remove the trees, and then they have a billing process they go through that they bill the owner. If the owner doesn't pay, then it goes through an assessment process, and it'll go on their property taxes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Michelle.
Other questions?
And then number 11, number 13, I just wanted to note that it looks like that is for the skate park, and my only, both of those are, I take it, Madam Chairperson, and has a place been determined yet and source of funding? Are there any identified sources? Are there any identified sources?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Yes, we are moving forward with the skate park. The site that we've decided to focus on, and that will be the focus of the study, both the geotechnical study and the conceptual study, is adjacent to Strobe Field, which is just over on the dry side of the levee from the boathouse. There's, in your documents, you'll probably see an outline of it, but I can show you that later if you like.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Okay, other questions?
Yes, and number 14 with the mayor's at $60,000. So what I gathered from reading that over was that the city is not actually paying the $60,000.
Right, right. Ms. Whedon?
Yeah, that's correct. As Mayor Hart became the chair of the Metro Coalition this year, we have the privilege of taking over paying the bills and keeping track of everything, so I'm going to run it all through our regular finance process, but you're right, most of it, there's a small portion that ultimately is ours because we pay dues to the entity as well, but most of it's paid by other cities.
Okay.
Just the fiscal agent. Other questions, Mr. Morrissey? Okay. Then all in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Hold on. Okay, under budget line items, do be amended. Approve the project budget for the Waterloo Civil Rights History Study Project funded with federal grant in the amount of $37,500 as submitted by the Planning Department. Second, approve the project budget for the Metro Coalition Project funded with dues from the Coalition member cities in the amount of $60,000 as submitted by the Finance Department.
Sure.
And I believe that is what you just discussed, right? So second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And then finally, under bills payment, as in the accounts payable dated December 17th, 2018, receive, place and file forward to the full council bills in the amount of $1,398,933.86.
Sure.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Ah, yes, sir.
I just realized I did not answer the second part of your question, Councilman Morrissey, funding for the skate park. I skipped right over that, my apologies. We do have $75,000 that the council has set aside in bond money for the project and we're seeking a multitude of grants to supplement that.
Mr. Hudding has pretty long line of successes in getting grant money, so.
Madam Chairperson, just, we're bringing up code enforcement earlier, I wanted to make a comment and that is, you know, in discussions with code enforcement, I wish that there would be something on the agenda, finance agenda sometime that would get them a different software to aid in their documentation. It'd be a time-saving thing and cost-effective and it'd be nice to see something like that put on finance where they were actually getting that software that they need to have over there.
Would that be best presented as part of the budget, Mrs. Whedon, for next year? Or how would you suggest additional software be added to this?
We did, Michelle Whedon, Chief Financial Officer, I think I've forgotten to say that twice today already. We did discuss that somewhat during the budget process last year and I thought they were going to come back with some information, but I'm not sure that we've seen that.
At this point, you're waiting for information from code enforcement?
Yes, and I think we should consider it during the budget process. There's, it's not as simple as it sounds on the surface. There's, that software is integrated with parcel information we get from the county that's already being imported into another software, so there are a lot of factors.
Is this their main software package?
Pardon me?
Is that what they use primarily for code enforcement?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions, Mr. Morrissey?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.